This conference will now be recorded.
I'm going to ask you all to please mute your mics except when you're talking so that we can try to control the background noise. Pursuant to Section 551.127 of the Texas Government Code and in conjunction with the guidance and provisions provided by the Governor of Texas in the Declaration of Disaster and subsequent executive orders altering certain Open Meetings Act requirements and ordering that gatherings of more than 10 people shall be avoided, the City Council of the City of Dennison, Texas, will conduct the meeting by video teleconference in order to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings, also called social distancing, to slow the spread of the coronavirus COVID-19. Ms. Wallington, will you conduct a roll call to verify quorum?
Yes. Councilmember Hander.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Adams.
Present.
Councilmember Greenleaf. Councilmember Greenleaf, I can see you, where are you? Are you muted?
I got unmuted. Present.
There you go. Mayor Gott.
Present.
Councilmember Doty.
Present.
Councilmember Crowley.
Present.
Councilmember Spiegel.
Present.
City Attorney Julie Fort. I can see you Julie, but you're muted.
Present.
There you go. And then City Manager Judd Rex.
Present.
Okay.
Thank you. Our invocation this evening will be given by Todd Coteau, Minister of Park Avenue Church of Christ. Todd?
Let's pray. Our Father, the one who created us, who loves us, who disciplines us, who teaches us, we pause to remember that you are not like anyone else. You are most holy, you are most wise, you are most loving, you are most gracious. We ask that from your greatness and holiness that your will be done in this world, in this city, in our very lives. We want to learn from heaven's goodness and create in our world a meager but real reflection of paradise. Please continue to provide for our daily needs as you have so faithfully done in the past. May your bread sustain us, may we hunger for the bread that only you can give, may we find peace in dining at your table. Forgive us as we so often fail you, others and ourselves. May we be compassionate with others who like us find living in your will so challenging. How can we possibly expect you to forgive us, our great failings, if we are not willing to forgive others? Keep us from the evil around us, protect us from the temptation to turn to anyone else but you. When evil lurks about us, snatch us from its destructive grip. Your wisdom is infinitely greater than ours, your power is unfathomable, your goodness exceeds any other good we know or any other good we can imagine. You are the Eternal One, eternally good, eternally wise, eternally loving. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Todd. We are honored to have with us tonight Officer Darren Riddick of the Dennison PD. He is a 13-year veteran. Officer Riddick is also a veteran of the Air Force from 2001 to 2005, and he is currently the School Resource Officer at Scott Middle School. So if you will keep your mics muted during the pledge, Officer Riddick will lead us.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Texas pledge.
All of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much, Officer Riddick. Regarding public comments, the public was permitted to offer public comments in the form of an email to be delivered to the city clerk no later than 4:30 today. No emails were received, therefore there will be no public comments. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second, Hander.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Hander. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing and take action on an ordinance changing the zoning of parcel ID numbers 148319, 148318, 148316, from agriculture to regional retail located at 3331 Stafford Drive, Dennison, Texas, 75020, case number 2020-13Z, Mr. Medina.
Good evening. Hold on. No, hold on. No, you don't. Okay. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from agriculture to regional retail. The 2018 comprehensive plan shows this area to be developed as mixed commercial land use types. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval at their April 28, 2020 meeting. Here's an aerial of the subject property. You can see 75 running north to south, Crawford running east to west, and then Stafford running east to west as well. Sorry, the subject properties, these are three lots. Here's a zoning map. It's a little difficult to tell with this color scheme. However, the very, very light blue is agriculture, and then almost teal looking, this is property ID number 380104, is also zoned regional retail. This is the B&amp;B Automotive that was recently built. Our subject properties here outlined in yellow for you. So to expand a little bit on this project, the property owner believes that rezoning the subject properties to regional retail will improve the marketability of the parcels and open the way for future development. At this time, there isn't any plans for a specific developer to go in there and build anything in particular. We're just trying to get the site ready for future development whenever that happens. City staff and future developers will need to work closely together on the site to provide appropriate transitions and buffers to nearby neighborhoods. So I go back to the previous slide here. While most of this does appear to be undeveloped, our comprehensive plan shows the properties located directly to the west to be developed as some sort of neighborhood. There's also Deer Creek to the west and northwest of these properties. That's an established neighborhood as well. That being said, whenever this project is developed, whether that is some sort of big box retailer or more localized, second access point either along 75, I'm sorry, along 75, in addition to upgrading Stafford, will need to occur to handle the increased traffic that we are likely to see here. In addition to that, as I mentioned, they're going to need to work closely with staff to ensure that adequate buffers, either screening, landscaping, traffic control, noise control, all these things are really examined as this project is going to move forward. So in closing, good site design, which mitigates vehicular traffic congestion, improves public utility quality and access while allowing emergency access, will need to be achieved. Though the rezone request in sight does show compatibility with city goals, as shown in the 2018 comprehensive plan, attention to potential challenges mentioned above will all need to be addressed to ensure high-quality development. This is a public hearing, staff recommends approval. I'm present for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Medina. This is a public hearing, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on behalf of this agenda item? There being none, the public hearing is closed. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt the ordinance changing the zoning of parcel ID numbers 148319, 148318, and 148316, from agricultural to regional retail located at 3331 Stafford Drive, Dennison, Texas, 75020.
Second, Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Medina. Item 6A, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action on authorizing filling of the coronavirus relief filing, I should say, of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, otherwise known as the CARES Act. Application provided through the Texas Division of Emergency Management and authorize the city manager to execute the same. Ms. Bowen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am excited to stand before you to report on a funding opportunity the Texas Division of Emergency Management is offering in conjunction with Coronavirus Relief Fund. The Coronavirus Relief Fund allocated to the state of Texas approximately $11 billion. The U.S. Treasury managed the initial distribution of these funds to states and jurisdictions with populations greater than 500,000. These 18 Texas jurisdictions received their allocation of the $11 billion directly from the Treasury. The state is now making funds available for eligible expenses to the jurisdictions that were not included in the initial 18 jurisdictions. Under Section 601A of the Social Security Act, as added by Section 5001 of the CARES Act, these funds may only be used to cover costs that are necessary expenditures incurred due to the public health emergency, were not accounted for in the budget most recently approved, and were incurred during the period that begins on March 1st and ends on December 30th of 2020. The Texas Division of Emergency Management will manage the distribution of funds, review of expenses and reimbursement. Initially, each eligible jurisdiction will receive an immediate distribution of 20% of the allocation. The distribution of funds is based on a calculation of $55 per capita. The population estimate determined as of January 2019 is set at 25,631, giving the City of Dennison a total allocation of a little more than $1.4 million. The immediate distribution of 20% would be $281,941. The guidance set forth by the Department of Treasury's interpretation of the limits on the permissible use of the fund payments includes the following allowable expenses related to COVID-19. Medical expenses such as emergency medical response expenses, including emergency medical transportation. Public health expenses such as expenses for communication and enforcement by local governments of public health orders. Disinfection of public areas and other facilities. And technical assistance to local authorities or other entities on mitigation. Payroll expenses for public safety, public health, healthcare, human services and similar employees whose services are substantially dedicated to mitigation or response. Expenses of actions to facilitate compliance such as expenses to improve telework capabilities for public employees or providing paid sick and paid family and medical leave to public employees to enable compliance with precautions. Expenses associated with the provision of economic support in connection with the public health emergency such as grants to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business interruptions caused by required closures, government payroll support program, and any other related expenses reasonably necessary to the function of government that satisfy the fund's eligibility criteria. The following is a list of examples of costs that would not be eligible expenditures of payments from the fund. Fund payments may not be used for government revenue replacement, including the replacement of unpaid utility fees. Damages covered by insurance. Reimbursement to donors for donated items or services. Workforce bonuses other than hazard pay or overtime. Payroll or benefits expenses for employees whose work duties are not substantially dedicated to mitigation efforts. Severance pay, legal settlements, expenses that have been or will be reimbursed under any federal program such as the FEMA Public Assistance Grant. To start the process to receive the immediate 20% allocation, council will need to take action on authorizing the filing of the application. If approved, staff will submit the application to the Texas Division of Emergency Management for processing. After receiving the initial allocation, continued submittal of financial reports on a minimum of a quarterly basis will occur to draw down the remaining available allocation of funds. Any funds not expended to cover costs that were incurred by December 30th, as required by the statute, must be returned to the Department of Treasury. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Ms. Bowen. Discussion from council. A motion.
Mayor, I move to approve authorizing filing of the Coronavirus Relief Fund, Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act, CARES Act, application provided through the Texas Division of Emergency Management and authorize the city manager to execute the same.
Second, Doty.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Doty. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Item 7, project updates. Receive updates from staff on pending capital projects and funding sources, revenues, anticipated bond issuances, and other financial and operational considerations that will impact fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Glad to be with you guys tonight. So want to circle back with you and keep you updated on just really the overall budget impact that COVID-19 is having on us and review both our utility and general funds and then also talk about the bond issuances that we had targeted for this year and recommendations for moving forward on that. Next slide, please. Chris. So just a kind of a general overview, as I've mentioned before, it's our goal to maintain through fiscal 2020, the end of fiscal 2020, a minimum fund balance in our general and utility funds of 60 days. We have a little bit in excess of this in both funds right now, and we're doing our best to accommodate what expenses we'll have to incur here, hopefully get some financial assistance through the CRF that we just talked about, and then end fiscal 2020 with at least 60 days in fund balance. So that's one of our overall goals. The other one is to, as we look to move forward with some of our bond issuances that we planned for 2020, is to take advantage of the low bond rates that we're seeing in the market right now, and then also hopefully take advantage of some hungry contractors to do some work for us in a favorable bid environment. Finally, as council has outlined, some strategic priorities for us, including our street work, code enforcement, and others, we want to maintain that momentum as we move forward as much as we can, knowing that we have to cut back in some areas to mitigate the reduction in revenue that we're seeing. And so, again, overall perspective is that the pandemic's had an impact on us. We want to make adjustments to our expenses as a result of that and just really keep monitoring the data that is coming out, mostly for our sales tax, sales tax revenue, make adjustments and help keep us moving forward. Next slide, please. So looking at the utility fund, we're seeing revenue being impacted really for a couple different reasons, generally a reduction in water usage and an increased amount of delinquent accounts. Just a little point of data for you that I pulled from our utility office today. April, we saw an increase of about 33% in the accounts that would qualify for a cutoff. So that's pretty significant jump there. Again, we're going to continue to work with our customers to keep them on track, understanding that many are going through economic difficulties right now, and so we are working with our customers to get them up to speed, but that will ultimately have an impact on our revenue and the timing of that revenue. So to help balance things out, as council knows, we've cut expenses 4.2% so far in utility fund, and that's really for general fund and utility fund, that's for the remaining, that's overall 4.2%, but we've only recognized that we only have about five months of the budget or the fiscal year left. So it's really kind of a more concentrated cut for the latter half of the fiscal year. We also have eight frozen positions right now in the utility fund to help us balance out the decrease in revenue that we're seeing there. So as a result of that, kind of looking at moving ahead with our water and sewer projects that we have planned for 2020, we do want to move ahead with those, with some projects that are critical to helping us move forward, but scale back the overall amount that we would issue on those water sewer projects from 8 million that we had planned initially to 4.5 million, again, to include some critical projects such as the Teresa Water Line Phase II, some wastewater treatment plant improvements, and a few others that are listed on the slide there. Next slide, please. On the general fund side, again, we're seeing revenue decreases in sales tax, building permit revenue, and our parks and recreation fees due to the impacts of COVID-19. So the sales tax, we shared those numbers, and that was, we saw about a 3% increase in March for March's numbers. Anxiously await to see what that looks like for April's numbers, which will come out in early June. Again, we've correspondingly decreased our expenses about 8% and frozen 11 positions right now in the general fund. So I talked about kind of moving forward with some strategic priorities that the council's identified. Street projects are definitely top of the list there, and while we have seen a decrease in revenue in general fund, we have fenced off, as you're aware, about $1 million a year into our street improvement fund so that we can attack our streets and make them better. So we want to go ahead and move forward with all $7.2 million in street projects this year and move forward with that bond issuance for Loy Lake Road, Waterloo Lake Drive and Flora Lane so that we can keep those projects moving ahead. Next slide, please. As far as the timing of those two bond issuances, this is, we've been working with our bond council on this schedule and will be back to look, be back to council to issue a notice of intent to proceed with the issuance in June. We will approve that or look to approve that in August and actually get the funds in September, again, to help these projects move forward. Next slide, please. One other large bond issuance and project that we had targeted for 2020 is our Designing Downtown Dennison Project Phase I. Few things I want to point out and just give you all an update on that project. April's preliminary property values look favorable for the TERS, looking at around a 20% increase in value in TERS number three, where there is some uncertainty about what will happen with those values next year as we continue to struggle through this recession that comes in the shadow of the pandemic. So we want to be cautious about moving forward and keep in mind that those values may go down in future years, and that would hinder our ability to move forward with the project. So that's something that we'll continue to monitor. The steering committee that was set up for D3 has finished interviewing the two construction manager at risk firms that provided proposals for the project. So we would like to, and you'll see it here in our next steps, move forward with one of those firms to do pre-construction services. It's a pretty low cost to the city, around $12,000 to move on to pre-construction services and allow that construction company to work with our engineer and architect on the project and the city team to really get detailed pricing on the project, look at various options, do some value engineering, and just spend a few months doing that. So we will be back before council in June to consider that contract for pre-construction services. Once that firm's been selected, they'll spend a few months working with our team on design work and pre-construction work, and then we think in about October, we should receive a guaranteed maximum price for the project and a proposed construction schedule that will give us a path forward. At that point, we want to evaluate what the cost of the project looks like relative to what we're seeing with property values and other options and make a determination to move forward at that point. Next slide, please. Just a couple other quick updates for you as well. We're planning an announcement tomorrow just to announce some more reopenings of city facilities, specifically looking at Waterloo Pool and a reservation-based opening for that facility starting in June. Library opened up a little bit more today, and then we're looking at music on Main and movies on Main and some options we have for that as well. So operationally, we're looking at moving forward with some reopenings in those categories tomorrow. Katy Trail Phase II funding, did want to let you all know that we did not get funding from TechDOT for Phase II of the Katy Trail project. That does not mean that we won't have a trail following the construction of the Teresa Drive Water Line and Phase I of Katy Trail. It'll just be an unapproved surface until we're able to apply again for federal funds through TechDOT for that, for Phase II of that project. So I wanted to share that, and we'll kind of look at our trail master plans and parks master plans when we have our city council budget workshop later in June. That's still scheduled for June 26th, and we'll have that at City Hall. So that's just kind of a general overview and update of what we're seeing, again, dealing with the impacts of the pandemic on our finances and the economic conditions around us. Data still comes in, you know, pretty regularly on what's happening with our utility customers, and we're going to continue to monitor the sales tax situation as well. So we hope we'll weather the storm well, we're well-prepared, and again, we want to try to keep moving forward with as many strategic priorities as possible. So I'm happy to answer any questions you've got and stand ready for any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex. All right, well, that was an information item only, so no action is required by the council. Pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the council reserves the right to convene an executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during the meeting to receive legal advice from its attorney on any posted agenda item permitted by law or to discuss the following. Consult with attorney on a matter in which the attorney's duty to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct with the chapter and/or consult with the attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or contemplated settlement of the same, Section 551.071. Consult with city attorney on contract-related instructions for downtown project. The time is 6:30, and the council will now go into executive session. If you will leave this call, please, and call the number that you were given, we'll enter into executive session. we'll enter into executive session.